Five thirty, so a call to order this meeting for Monday, December 21st. Carl, would you start us off with a roll call, please?
Councilmember Remley.
President.
Ronain.
Present.
Present and present.
Thank you. Lunsman.
Present.
Rife.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Reinbold.
Present.
Langer.
Present.
Rux.
Present.
Mayor Shawman.
Present. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Legions. There are no additions or changes to the agenda, so I would take a motion to approve the agenda as it is published.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Reinbold. Carl, would you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we'll have the approval of the minutes for last week, or last meeting of December 7th, 2020. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Moved. Second.
A motion from Councilman Lunsman and a second from Councilman Rife. Do you have any additions or changes to that? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. No one has signed up to speak at the open forum, so we'll move along to our consent counter. We've got six individual items listed within our consent counter of routine city business. Can I get a motion to make an approval for those?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Ronain. Any questions on any of these items? Carl, give me a roll call vote.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we'll move along to our new business. We've got first reading of an ordinance 2012-01, supplementing the 2020 budget for various unanticipated projects, activities, and expenses. Possible approval of that first reading. So Carl, would you tell us about that?
Thank you, Mayor. Most of these are fairly routine end-of-year adjustments. When we start out the year, of course, we don't have the crystal ball that we should, so there are changes that are unforeseen and need to be made. The one I would like to highlight is that there are no supplements needed for the snow removal budget. One of few years that we can say that. Secondly, we are, this year, doing a supplement to the revenue side, which is very unusual because of the large COVID relief fund grant that we received. When there's something that material in revenue that has changed during the year, we need to note that so that the financial statements don't look askew. Other than that, we'd point out that we did roof repairs on City Hall. That's a fairly sizable one. In RideLine, we replaced a lift and purchased a Durango, but in talking to Transportation Director Crokel, I think those are covered by grants, or a large share of it is covered by grants. In the special sales tax fund, I would like to note that the Streetscape Fund that we have maintained for several years since we did the Streetscape project, we're going to close that out and distribute that money to the Aberdeen Downtown Association. It's gotten to an amount where really for us to try and monitor that is beyond where we are at with that, those funds. Also, in the 911 dispatch, we are sharing 50% of the new councils that are being placed at the dispatch center. Brown County is paying 50%, we are paying 50%. Going down the line, most of the debt service funds are just administrative in nature, making sure that there's funds, or excuse me, budget there to make the debt service payments that are required. Would note that we are closing out TIF number 10 and TIF number 3. So that's always good when we close out those TIFs, then the money can be distributed to the taxing entities. Then, moving on to capital project funds, the last page in the explanations, of course, with softball capital project fund, because that wasn't in place when we did the budget in 2019 for 2020, that's a large dollar amount, but we do get bond proceeds to account for all of those costs. And the same with TIF number 32. Bonds were closed here the first week in December, so those funds are in the bank, and as the project costs come due, we will make the payments to vendors.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Ronain and a second from Councilman Rux. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this?
I just hope that Carl didn't jinx us on the snow removal part.
I looked at the 10-day forecast and I feel quite confident.
Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Carl, looking at the PRF Capital Project Fund on the Wiley Park barn, so is the amount above and beyond insurance coverage the $40,000? Is that what I understand?
Insurance will cover about $50,000 if I'm not mistaken, Joe, but in talking with Mark Colvin and city manager Joe Gah, it was decided that we would make it a bigger barn than it was before, and with the needs that they were looking for, we thought that putting approximately $85,000 to $90,000 in there for expenses to build it and get it the way they want it, the way it should be.
Understood. Thank you. Carl, Councilman Rux.
If you could refresh my memory, Carl, the Streetscape Fund, that was left out of the TIF bond proceeds when we did that, was that correct?
Yes, that's correct. When the TIF proceeds for TIF number 3 were issued, the bond was issued, there was some money that was left over, and because of some swapping that we did, and Robin probably remembers this better than I do, it's been a few years ago, the city did some extra work, and the TIF district had some bond proceeds over, left over, so we have maintained those in the special sales tax fund, kept track of different improvements they have made throughout the last 12 years, 13 years? Yeah, yep. So as those improvements were made, planters and things like that, irrigation for the planters, then we would spend it out of that pot of money, and now it's gotten to the point where it's kind of immaterial for us to maintain, and it would just be easier if the Aberdeen Downtown Association had those and their board was able to make those expenditures.
Okay, perfect.
So Carl, how, in terms of dollars and cents, how would this roughly compare to previous year's supplements?
You know, in the funds, say for instance, the general fund, Parks and Recreation Fund is very similar to what other years are. Debt service, there's a lot of small, immaterial ones, $1,000 for fiscal agent fees, $500 for fiscal agent fees. That's really an example of not knowing exactly what the payments are going to be from one year to the next, and just making sure that we have budgetary authority to do that. And again, with the capital project funds, it's hard to budget for a capital project fund basically 18 months in advance when you're not really 100% sure what the bond proceeds are going to be, what the bids are going to come out, and things like that. So it's easier to do it, it's more accurate to do it.
Sure.
As the bonds are issued.
In terms of the overall amount that we're voting on here, is it roughly the same as?
Overall, very similar, yes.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Got a motion and a second. Carl, would you give me a roll call vote for that first reading of this ordinance, please?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the first reading of ordinance 2012-02, supplementing the 2020 budget for various activities and expenses. Park Recreation Forestry Gift Fund, possible approval of this first reading. So Carl, what would you have to say about this?
Thank you, Mayor. This is prepared by Deputy Finance Officer Jordan McQuillan, and this would be the fourth one of this type of ordinance. The Parks and Recreation has a gift fund that receives donations and whatnot for different projects throughout the park system. We expend those in the capital project fund or in the Parks and Recreation 208 Fund, which is their general operations, and this is simply moving the money and the authority from the gift fund to those other two funds.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion from Councilman Rife and a second from Councilman Reinbold, Councilman Rux. What have you got?
Just, I thought it was a little odd that under mosquito control, they have activity paid for with gift fund donations. You know, $1,790, do we have people actively contributing to the mosquito?
I'm not sure about that one in particular, Councilmember Rux. It could be that that is a grant that we received from the state, and it was receipted into the gift fund.
Okay.
And, of course, we have the activity within the mosquito control budget itself, so it's either a grant or it could have been a donation, but we typically don't see donations for mosquito control.
I just haven't seen it before, so it was a little odd to me, so.
Yep.
It might be an opportunity to sell naming rights to the mosquito. Anything else? All right, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the consideration to approve the implementation of updated employee handbook as of January 1st, 2021. Possible approval of that implementation. Joe, what can you tell us about this new employee handbook?
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that the HR staff spent several months on, taking a look at, really just cleaning it up. It's not a major rewrite, it's just to clean up a few minor changes. The last time that had been done was 2010. So you can imagine there's been a few legal changes and just some procedural things, so you've got that in front of you, you've seen it. Really, the, this is just request to implement it, we'll implement it as of January 1st and start the rollout of that. Again, a lot of the stuff is in the workplace compliance, a lot of that area. Really, the only, the most exciting thing that we had talked a little bit about here was administrative holidays. There wasn't an inclusion of that, and now there is a section for that, so that we don't have to bring that up every year. And the staff is still very excited that they had the day after Thanksgiving off. A few folks thought maybe we'd give them Christmas Eve off, too, but this, this might play into that. Most years from the administrative holidays, that's probably what it'll be, is the day after Thanksgiving and Christmas Eve, but depending on the calendar, there'd be a little flexibility there to use it in some other places, and that's something the exec staff will look at each year and make some, some proposals on that. But it looks good, it's, HR staff's spent a lot of time working on it, we just ask for your approval to implement that.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask city manager Gah a question? Sure. Hang on one second, so we've got a motion from Reinbold and a second from Johnson. Motion from Rux, second.
All right, I missed that.
Councilwoman Langer, what have you got?
I just was trying to go through this quickly, kind of throughout the week, I was looking, and I'm having a hard time seeing, so the city, or I'm sorry, the state has a policy when it comes to adoption, having a baby, or any of those aspects, giving people leave. Now, I know we have FMLA, but from my understanding, with the city's policy, there are some issues as far as what you can use. So if we have an employee that loses a child, or that's child hospitalized, they can take FMLA, but they're not able to take certain other benefits because it's not technically their illness. So then they have to take unpaid time in order to, they're grieving the loss of a child, or be able to be there with their spouse, or do whatever is needed, from my understanding of this. And so it's not really in line with what the state is doing currently and their, their government policy as far as their employees. So I just was wondering if I'm misreading our policy, or if that's correct, and if not, I just am wondering if maybe I could have another week on this so I could talk to the HR person.
It is on page 28 where the Family Medical Leave Act.
Right, and I see that, which is very, I mean, that's very normal, but that's just unpaid. So if a, if a employee wants to use their, and I can't remember what you call it, not their PTO, but their other leave, if they have an illness, it doesn't cover them if it's their child. So I know we've had employees that have lost children, or they're, you know, they've had situations where they need to use that, and they're, they're having to take it unpaid where they can't do that because they need their paycheck. So I just, it's out of line with what the state is doing, and I meant to get on this earlier, and then I saw this come up, and so.
Yeah, we do have an emergency leave bank, that's kind of our equivalent to a short-term disability, and that's what they can use when they're out before, and oftentimes they will use that, then they'll use some PTO, which is a combination of sick and vacation. Some, we, the union departments still have sick leave, so they're able to use that, too, but it is not uncommon that a complete leave is, is not paid for. Oftentimes, some of it will be, they can use some of their leave, but oftentimes, there is a bit of a balance there, an unpaid leave.
Councilman Rux.
And, you know, as, as a state employee, you're dealing with two different systems here. As a state employee, I get X amount of time of vacation, I get X amount of time of sick time. My vacation can only be used for X, my sick time can only be used for X. And those restrictions are actually more restrictive than the city, like, they just freed it up, thankfully, this year, to where before, if my child was sick, I couldn't use my sick time. If someone outside of my family on the state end, I couldn't use sick time, I'd have to use vacation. So, and of course, even under the state, if I take family medical leave and I don't have enough time, I still don't get paid for that time. So I have to use leave, and there are no sick banks at the state. So it's all my time that would have to be for that. So, so two different systems here. If you have PTO, that's a combination of sick and time off, where the state has two different systems.
Right. Sorry, can I ask that, if possible?
Please do.
Okay, so from my understanding, we have paid extended leave bank that we are only allowing employees to use for their illnesses. So if they lose a child, that is not considered something that they can use for that purpose. So therefore, they have to take FMLA status, which if they're the only working parent, that doesn't really work very well. Even if they have 300 hours, or however many days in the extended leave, they're not allowed to use that. Where the state actually has a paid family leave program where they're able to use certain hours, and it allows parents time off after the birth of a child, or any type of issue like that beyond what their PTO is. So I'm just, I just, I'm not saying that this is the perfect policy for the city, I just know we've personally had employees that are, have been affected by this, and so I just would like to make sure, if we're spending this time to update this handbook, that we just take a look at this. Because it's.
May I be heard, Mayor?
Oh, please do. Councilman Ronain.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I started wading through this, and I would really appreciate a redlined version of this. I, you know, I read it in the, in the past, and I guess I would like to know what changes there are. I'd like the redlined version, and I would like this, I'd like to move to postpone this for one week.
Second.
So we've got a motion to table this reading for one week, and we've, Councilman Ronain, we've got a second from Councilwoman Langer. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Does that seem satisfactory? We'll take a vote on tabling this for a week. Oh, go ahead.
Can I just ask to those involved here in city management, would there be any repercussions or issues about tabling it for one week?
No, we can definitely bring a redlined version. I will say that the things Councilwoman Langer's asking for would delay it, but that's, that's something we could work on later and bring back as a change, so we would probably want to implement it, but a redlined version is really easy to, to take care of.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And it kind of sounds like maybe just some back-and-forth dialogue might answer some of the questions.
Exactly. Talk about the situations that have come up and how we might handle that differently.
Sure. Perhaps Director Moore could, could speak to Councilwoman Langer and set the record straight on a few of those things, or answer some clarifying questions. So we'll take a vote on delaying this vote for a week, tabling this for one week, period of time here. Carl, would you give me a roll call vote on that, please?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. This matter is tabled until next week, where we will have a redlined version to review. Move along to our appointment of Paul Georgoff to the Aberdeen Airport Board for a term ending in June 30th, 2022. Joe, what have you got to tell us about that?
Yes, there's, there's been a resignation of a board member, so we need to fill his slot. Paul Georgoff has expressed interest, he's an Aberdeen native, went away to school, got a degree, I think, in, in some finance, and then also has actually a little training, professional training in aviation management. So has returned back to his hometown with his family, working at Dakota Bank, and would just be a nice addition to have, given his business and aviation background, and staff recommends approval.
I move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Lunsman. Any questions or statements? Carl, give me a roll call vote on that appointment, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the payment and change order for the Mill and Overlay Improvements Project, possible approval and payment, number four, in the amount of $63,736.38, and the change order number four, in the amount of $17,044.83 to Jensen Rock and Sand. Robin, what have you got?
Well, probably the thing most notable here would be the change order of $17,000, the majority of which, $16,000 and some change, was for removal of some concrete pavement. It's a composite pavement, we had the spec set up with more asphalt in mind, and so we had to do some more removals that were sizable. So that's what the majority of that change order is, and really, the payment is to reduce or eliminate the retainage that we have against the project and be able to close it out. Move approval.
Second. Motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Johnson. Does anyone have any questions? Carl, roll call vote.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got our review and approval of the claims and payroll. We've got a bill's approval for the list of December 21st, 2020, and we've also got the payroll, which is the approval for the pay period from December 6th until the 19th for the city's share of social security, old age, and survivors' insurance, retirement health, and life insurance. Can I get a motion to make all those payments, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Rux. Carl, would you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the city managers' report. Joe, tell us what you've got.
This may be the longest report I've ever given, but it's probably one of the most important. I think about this time every year. The former city manager did the same thing. We're going to change it up a little bit for 2021, but we'll keep it a secret for now, what we're going to do, but this is an exciting opportunity to recognize some of our employees. So in 2020, 45 city employees of a total of about 275 hit milestone work anniversaries. So I'm going to run through this list very quickly and tell you their name and their department, so that they do get a little recognition. Their department head has already presented them with their certificate, and this will just be a little public recognition for them. So five-year anniversaries, Shane Smith in planning and zoning, Ty Renke in Mike Lucky in police department, Christian Scott, Brant Winter, Lisa Fisher, Brett Lettabore, and Stuart Donaldson in fire. In public works, Cameron Jarvis, Levi Christensen, John Kolb, Kevin Kistner, in RideLine, Ryan Derucci, Tom Wanty, and then in parks, Molly Taylor, Joey Padfield, and Bert Clipfelm in the airport, Jacob Deuce. Waterworks, Justin Steiger, and in water reclamation, Mason Dennis Joy and Brian Jarvis, those are the five-year. In 10-year, Patricia Holm in RideLine, Marilyn Colas in library, Ryan Husby in Parks and Rec, Bob Braun in Waterworks, Scott Ganji in water reclamation, and Tom Dundon in water reclamation. 15-year anniversaries, Ken Hubbard in planning and zoning, Mike Law, Matt Olson, Brady Berg, and Cody Pickrell in police. In the fire department, Dave Volick, Jesse Reistrum, Mike Rimick, and Lance Hammerick. And in the library, Hannah Lagerquist. 20-year anniversaries, Deb Cornelius in finance, Robin Hornseth in public works, and Charlene O'Malley in the library. 25-year anniversaries, Stacy Sexton and Jeremy Thorstenson in public works, and then a couple in parks, Tim Blue and Roman Scowren, and we actually have, really getting up there, 30 years. One of our own department heads, Patty Badkin, in water reclamation superintendent, so 30 years, that's a long time, that's a lifetime with the city, but we just want to thank all these employees. It's real important to see this and celebrate it, and next month, we'll, we'll do, we'll kind of do things a little bit different, we'll tell you in February what we're doing, but that's, that's a little surprise. And then the second item, before we, we move out of this, I was watching last week, you And then the second item, before we move out of this, I was watching last week, you know, we've been talking about the face mask resolution and the marketing. I met Friday afternoon with the chamber staff, we're going to order a few more disposable masks, that went over really well, the sanitation stations are going over really well. I'm kind of at a pause with the radio marketing, those spots are running, and I think a lot of people are hearing them, but if there does become an opportunity for a little bit more widespread vaccination, I think that's probably the next plan. One thing that I was a little concerned about was the resolution was written to end with the governor's state of emergency, which moving up through this whole process has been the end of the year. On Friday, the governor approved extending that to June 30, so the resolution can go right along with that, and if the council wants to make a decision to do something on that sooner, you can, but that'll keep going. So I'm hearing a lot of good things about the marketing and hearing the things, I think that's going well, and I hope you feel the same, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Joe, and I think that all those milestones are really indicative of how good of a place the city of Aberdeen is to work, so thanks to everyone who takes part in all of that. Thank you to all the employees that have toughed it up with us for all those years. Anything else before we move to go to executive session?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask the city manager a question, if possible.
Councilwoman Langer.
I just wanted to ask, so obviously, you said the plan is to move forward with advertising about possible vaccinations. Do we have an update on vaccinations? I know we had gotten that email from Brown County Emergency Management, but I just was wondering if we had an update on that, if the city is going to be involved in any way, and then also just plan for advertising. I mean, I'd like to continue advertising on what we're doing, I think the message is strong, and I'm just wondering what we've done as far as dollars and what we need to do moving forward.
Yeah, on to your question with vaccinations, we don't know anything more than the emails last week. This is probably one of those things that patience is the best word, and we're all nervous, and some are ready to line up, and we just, once we have a plan, that'll come, probably emergency management will work on some of that in correlation with the healthcare providers, but I think once we do see it, really doing a public plan to alleviate some mass congestion at those types of events might be helpful. We did do the initial radio advertising, we haven't upped that yet, we have a little bit of money left to do that, but again, we're kind of waiting to roll through that cycle, and some of those were kind of heard alongside the Christmas messaging, so we'll start to see that change here in a week, and I think we'll just keep on with it unless the council, as a council, you want to do something a little different.
Thank you, and I was on a phone call today that indicated that Avera would probably be getting their healthcare worker inoculations in on Wednesday, so I guess that's something to look forward to. The PR guy for Yankton's, Avera, said that he thought that it was going to be the same for them as well as Aberdeen, so I guess I extrapolated that, so some of our healthcare workers will probably be getting there soon.
One last thing, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, so.
Good about that, that's a milestone, also. Merry Christmas, all.